Counselor Novak. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Albany City Council meeting Wednesday, June 25th, 26th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I will now call the meeting to order. Would you please all join me in a pleasure of allegiance? Will the clerk please do a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. For Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Counselors Newton.
President.
Novak.
Here.
Seku.
Here.
Kapsinski.
Here.
McGee.
And.
Here.
Five members present, Your Honor.
Counselor McGee has an excused absence, so we wish her well on her travels. Thank you all. Next on tonight's agenda, getting right to business, is a public hearing, a legislative public hearing regarding amendments to the Albany Development Code as specified in Planning File DC-02-24. The applicant is the City of Albany Committee Development Department. I call to order the legislative public hearing at 6:01 PM. If you wish to testify, there are two options available, which were described in the council agenda and the notice materials. At this time, I call for a staff update by the project planner, Jennifer Capello.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Capello. This is land use file DC-0224. This is a continuation from our June 12th City Council meeting where we brought some floodplain development code updates for your review and potential approval. So at that meeting, there was some testimony submitted, and we had the opportunity to meet with the individuals who provided the testimony and discuss about some of their concerns and comments. Through that meeting, we were able to find some cases where there was some conflicting information under the servability and interpretation, as well as some redundancy in the permit review. And we made the modification to remove that. We also received some comments about some spilling gars, and we added that into this ordinance. And that is it.
Does the council have any questions for staff? I don't see any questions from council.
I do have one question. This is, I don't want to jump the gun. This is in regard to floodplain?
Yes.
Okay. So I noticed on page 11, it says FEMA defines non-residential construction to include structures not used for human habitation. This includes parking, limited storage, and building access. I'm just curious. So foreseeably, we could have parking in a floodplain or building access in a floodplain that would then be flooded so that you couldn't access your building, or your cars would float away? I'm just needing a little clarification.
Yeah. So in the floodplain, there are buildings, and you can have some portion of that building under the base flood elevation, but it has to be reserved for parking or storage only. So no habitable space. So yes, it would limit your access to the building. Hopefully, you are not located in your building when the flooding happens because there's flood alerts and warning systems in place.
But the development code would approve a building that's not for habitation but for storage or business or whatever, where the building entrance is in a floodplain, which if it floods, you couldn't get into your building and everything would be ruined. And the development code would say, sure, go ahead and do that.
Yeah, that is a federal requirement that we have. So if we were to remove that, then you wouldn't be able to build any accessory structure in garages in the floodplain, and all development would have to be out of the floodplain. So this is saying if you're in there, you can have it for storage or garages.
Garage.
Thank you. Only. And there are standards in there. You have to have flood vents and other items as well. But you can't have habitable space below that BFE.
Okay. You cannot have habitable space below.
Correct. And it further restricts it to 600 square feet. So if you had a garage with a shop in it, that is considered residential, and you would have to elevate that up.
Okay. So that leads me to another question, because we have proposed development in North Albany in a floodplain, cluster housing in a floodplain. Is that, are we going to require them to elevate? So I mean, what's going to happen there? How is that even, it's in a floodplain?
Correct. So any new development has to be elevated to at least one foot above the base flood elevation. So if there was a cluster development that is under review or is being proposed, at the time, they would have to do, if it's four units, four lots, or four acres or larger, they would have to do a floodplain study. And based on that study, they get a flood elevation. All of their construction has to be elevated one foot above that for the habitable space.
Okay. And my understanding is this cluster development in North Albany is not proposed, it's approved. So if it's been approved, it will have jumped through those steps, and they will have approved it with the elevation included?
Is this development, you're talking about the townhouse project?
Nope. I'm talking about down the hill next to the middle school.
So I.
Also on Jones Avenue, there's another development there as well, also in a floodplain.
I'm not familiar with one on Jones. The one that's by the middle school.
Is that the Leman property?
There's the Leman property where they have a fill permit, and they've been putting fill there to elevate it out of the floodplain, but they don't have any permits for construction.
Okay. I, I don't know. There's an awful lot of development in North Albany, and my understanding is we have the 80 townhomes up the hill on Gibson. We have a cluster development by the junior high, middle school, and we have further development on Jones Lane, all of which have been approved, and all of which are in a flood, well, not all of which in a floodplain. Up the hill is not in a floodplain.
Right. And so Jones, I believe, is your cottage cluster.
Yeah, we've had conversations with people who wanted to do a cottage cluster at Jones and North Albany Road. I don't believe that's in the floodplain.
That one's not in the floodplain.
Okay. But development by the middle school is definitely in a floodplain. The Mulamet River floods.
Right. So the one that's right next to the middle school is, only has a permit for fill. So they're putting in extra fill to elevate it outside of the floodplain. Then the next step would be to get the LOMAR F, which is a letter of map removal for placement of fill. At that point, it would no longer be considered within the floodplain. But they have not applied for any building permits, subdivisions, townhouses, anything like that.
Right. Because it starts with fill.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other counsel? Okay. Any other counsel have any questions for staff? At this time, I declare the public hearing closed at 6:07 PM. Does the City Council wish to discuss these amendments? Thank you. There is an ordinance for your consideration on page five of the council packet. Counsel? So.
All right.
Will the city attorney read the ordinance the first time in title only?
Certainly. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and Development Code and adopting findings.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the title, read the ordinance the second time in title only?
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second. Have a motion on second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no.
No. I actually have another question, and I, I don't know if I missed an opportunity to ask, but there's, there's language in here about variance, a grant of relief by the city from the terms of floodplain management regulation. I'm curious if someone can clarify that for me.
So I've closed the public hearing.
Okay. So, all right. So I can't get an answer.
This would have to come back at the next.
It'd have to come back at the next meeting.
Could I get an answer to that question, then?
You can get, well, go ahead and answer the question. We'll have to bring this back at the next meeting.
Okay. So your question is based on the variance procedures that are unique to the floodplain?
Yeah. On page 12, it just says, "A grant of relief by the city from the terms of floodplain management regulation." And I'm wondering if the city intends to grant variances for development in the floodplain.
So this would be specifically variances to floodplain standards, rather than other variances that could be requested. I don't believe the city has ever granted a variance to the floodplain standards. It is extremely difficult to get. It is not as easily to obtain as it is a regular variance, which is also not easy to obtain.
That's encouraging. Thank you.
Yes.
So we're gonna have to bring that back to the next meeting. Okay. Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative quasi-dedicial public hearing regarding screening files AN-02-23 and ZZZC-05-23. The proposal is for annexation of two properties within the concurrent, concurrent zoning map amendments. The annexation will also remove property from the taxing districts of the Albany Rural Fire District. I call the public, order this legislative quasi-dedicial public hearing at 6:10 PM. If you wish to testify, there are three options available, which are described on the council agenda. Do any members of the, declare a conflict of the council, declare a conflict of interest? Hearing none. Does any members report a ex parte contact? Do any members wish to write, report a site visit?
I can report that I know where these properties are. That's all.
Does that, does that sound important? Thank you. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to challenge the City Council's right to determine this matter or participation of any council member in the hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand. If you are attending in person or if you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name and to be called upon. Hearing none. At this time, I'll call for reading of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the City Council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or the development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Thank you. At this time, I call for a staff report from project planner David Martino.
Thank you. Tonight, there's two annexations being proposed. Both of these are what we consider island annexations, meaning that they're surrounded by and abutting city limits. The first one is at 215 Expo Parkway, and the proposed zoning on that will be the medium-density residential zone, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The second property is at 132 Clover Ridge Road Northeast, and the proposed zoning there is mixed-use residential, which is consistent with the Village Center designation on that property. So there's four annexation criteria that have to be considered. One is eligibility. That is, are the properties abutting the city limits, and are they within the urban growth boundary? The second one is infrastructure. Does the city have the ability to provide services to these properties? The third is planning, much like we recently undertook there with the East Albany Refinement Plan. That's another way that we engage in planning for future annexations. And then finally, if council determines that it's reasonable, then council can decide to annex the properties. So the utilities at 215 Expo Parkway are found both on Expo Parkway and also at the eastern fringe of the property that will be coming in for annexation. So the city water, sewer, and stormwater are all available to serve the site upon development. And same thing with 132 Clover Ridge, water, sewer, and storm drainage is available at or near the property. So concurrent with the annexation are zoning map amendments. And so what you see here is the five review criteria that have to be satisfied for a zoning map amendment. So public notice went out to property owners within 300 feet of each of the properties on May 13th. Staff report with exhibits were posted on the Planning Commission and Planning Projects homepage since May 13th. The Democrat Herald published a legal notice for these annexations on May 18th, and each property was posted on May 24th. And as of tonight's council meeting, we've received no comments. So our recommendation is to support the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation to annex both properties. And do you have any questions?
Also have any questions? We will now be taking to public testimony, first from those in favor of the annexations, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone that's neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of their testimony, please briefly describe, I apologize for that, please briefly describe the exhibit and then have it sent to the email address provided. Anyone in house like to speak? Okay.
We have no one signed up, Your Honor.
No one signed up? Thank you. Those who registered, though I have to read this. Those who registered to speak during the meeting will now be called upon to report a testimony, followed by any of those who did not register to speak. Does any member of the audience or attending virtually wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience or attending virtually wish to speak in opposition to express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience or attending virtually wish to speak neutrally of the application? Does staff have a, there's no rebuttal testimony, because no one testified. Does any men, procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please unmute your, turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. I declare this public hearing closed at 6:17 PM. Does the City Council wish to discuss this case? I have to check with you. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
There are two ordinances for your consideration in the council packet. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance for coming annexation in title only?
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of properties identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11S03W04AC, tax lots 701 and 2100, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance the second time in title only?
The ordinance a second time in title only.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. City Attorney, please read the ordinance.
Got to vote on it first.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
All right.
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of properties identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11SO3W04AC, tax lots 701 and 2100, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Question? Do we adopt the ordinance, is, should the motion be to adopt the ordinance as presented or to adopt the ordinance with the language on the paper in front of us, which is the appropriate step? Either or?
Well, we, I have to read the ordinance twice, but it would be, it would be better to approve the, the motion, the suggested language in the, in the purple sheet there if we could.
Okay. Do you want to do it again?
You just make the motion off of the sheet.
Okay.
I move the City Council adopt an ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation with concurrent rezones to RM and MUR under Planning Files AN-02-23 and ZZC-05-23, as described in the May 24, 2024 staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report, testimony presented at the hearings, and the findings in support of the application made by the City Council during deliberations on this matter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Thank you. Next would be ordinance withdrawing the property from the Albany Rural Fire District, Fire Protection District. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance withdrawing the property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District in title only?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11S03W04AC, tax lots 701 and 2100 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Would the council like to motion to read the ordinance the second time in title only?
I move we read the ordinance in title only.
Question?
Second time.
Question over here?
Yes. Should we have a staff report on that particular ordinance?
We've already talked about it.
Removing Albany Rural Fire Protection District?
Yeah, there was no other.
That's part of the annexation.
That's part of the annexation.
So, yeah, when we, when we annex property into the city, it will become part of the City of Albany Fire District. And so we have to remove it from the rural, or else you'll have two jurisdictions.
Understood, but that wasn't mentioned by David at our, at the ceder right here. So just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor. Would the, because we had a motion and a second? First.
I don't think we had a second, Mayor.
Oh, we have a motion to, Counselor, can you read your motion again, please?
I move we read the ordinance a second time in title only. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye for reading the ordinance the second time in title only.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11S03W04AC, tax lots 701 and 2100 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance withdrawing property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District?
I move the City Council adopt an ordinance that would withdraw properties listed in the Planning File AN-02-23 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Thank you. Decision to the City Council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice to intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of the amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward the Department of Land Use Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted amendments and findings and notify the Department of any substantial changes which have occurred in the proposal since the previous notification of this ordinance or the department. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We got one more. Next. I gotta get to the right page. Okay, that's done. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing, the Community Development Block Grant CBD, CDBG 2024 Action Plan and Community Needs. I declare the public hearing open at 6:23 PM. At this time, I will call a staff report from project planner Beth Freeland and Ann Catlin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I'm here to just present on our 2024 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and also to hear any community needs. So just a little bit about the CDBG program. There are three kind of overarching objectives of the program, which are to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities. And those three objectives apply primarily to low and moderate income residents, so those falling below 80% of the area median income. All of the activities and actions that are outlined in the 2024 Action Plan or any action plan have to relate back to the goals that are outlined in our five-year plan, so that we're showing a connection between how we're using funds to advance those goals. And so the strategic plan goals are to increase affordable housing options. And that goal kind of got condensed, but really is meant to speak to adding capacity along our whole housing pipeline from shelter to transitional housing to permanent housing. And then additionally to maintain our existing affordable housing stock, support public services for low and moderate income residents, support economic opportunities for low and moderate income residents, and strengthen our low and moderate income neighborhoods and accessibility. So for the 2024 program year, we are happy to report that we actually had a larger allocation from HUD after years of declining allocations. Sure, our allocation bumped up a little bit to $349,123. So that money is subject to a couple caps. So first, the admin cap, we can only spend 20% of that funding on our admin. And so that helps pay for my position and also things like our public notices and advertisements that go out for the CDBG program, as well as any for housing activities. And then there's also, is subject to a 15% public service cap. So any kind of direct services to low and moderate income people, we can only spend 15% of our funds on those programs. And then the remaining amount can be spent on activities that are economic development, facility improvements. It could be neighborhood improvements or housing rehab, or other types of rehab programs. But this year, we have economic development, facility improvements, and housing rehab falling into that category. So first, I'll just share how we're using the public service funds. So case management and emergency shelter for homeless youth. So funding will be going to Jackson Street Youth Shelter to provide that service. COPE through the Creating Housing Coalition will receive funds to provide case management for unsheltered homeless adults. The Senior Companion Program through Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments will receive a small amount of funding this year as well. And then the Boys and Girls Club will receive funds to provide scholarships for youth to be able to access their after school and summer programming, which is key kind of gap childcare services for low and moderate income families. And then in terms of the non-public service activities, so for increasing affordable housing across the pipeline, we have security improvements at a shelter for survivors of domestic violence, and that's through CARDVA. That'll go towards a privacy fencing, secure fencing, security cameras, and I believe locks on interior doors. It will also, for maintaining existing affordable housing stock, will also provide Dev Northwest with funding, which will help three homeowners be able to make necessary improvements and repairs on their homes to be able to stay in those homes safely. And then we also are supporting economic opportunities for low and moderate income residents by continuing to support the Family Connections Program, which grants funding to lower moderate income business owners that are providing in-home childcare services. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions or comments?
Do the councils have any questions for staff?
I have a comment. I would just like to comment that I'm impressed with the variety of programs that have been chosen this year at the, the Boys and Girls Club program for, that provides activities that serve as childcare as well. I know how, how well that's, how much that is needed. I've always been a supporter of the Senior Companion Program. I'm glad to see that that's getting some money, or it's being, this is being spread across a large economic spectrum and age spectrum. And so I appreciate the, the attention to detail that the commission did in, in making these choices.
The other counselors, Counselor Kapsinski?
Just questioning, a very, I totally agree with Counselor Smith, but where do we see some accountability report coming back that says that, you said you spent X dollars on a program Y. Did they?
This is, it's always a strange order of events, because it always feels like I'm doing this action plan before I've reported back on what we've done. But that, it's called the Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and that will be probably your first meeting back in September, will be, I'll share the outcomes from the funding that went out for the 23 to 24 program year. I'll share the outcomes from the funding that went out for the twenty three to twenty four program year.
Do we know why we're seeing an increase in, uh, funding?
It's based on the HUD formula. Um, so I'm not sure if the, the pie got bigger or if our, you know, slice of the pie got bigger. It could just be that there was more of funding allocated at the federal level to the C D B G program or it could be that our need has, you know.
It, it's formula based. It was a really small increase. I mean, you know. But we'll take it. It's much better. It's based a lot, like poverty rates and, I mean, a lot of different complicated numbers. I, I don't believe that any more money was allocated to the program. So maybe something bad happened and we are getting more money. Or something good happened and we're getting more money.
We rounded up.
Counselor Novak?
Thank you. Um, how, how many years have you been getting this funding?
Uh, we became eligible in twenty thirteen and started receiving funds, um, to spend in twenty thirteen, fourteen. So it's been just over ten years.
Okay.
And we've, um, yep.
I, I guess I'm, my question is related to what Counselor Kopczynski just asked. Um, I was kind of wanting some hard info with regard to how many housing units have actually been created since twenty thirteen, fourteen? And how many people do we have living in a permanent housing situation since twenty thirteen, fourteen? Is that information that will be addressed in the first meeting in September? Because I'd really like.
Yes, um, so this money actually, um, can't be used to build housing. Um, it, so, but we will, we can provide you with a summary, not just from this year, but year to date. For example, how many homes have been rehabbed, the different programs that we funded, um, what those are, we can try to pull that together. So, um, we have to rely on agencies to apply for the funds and then their projects, if they're eligible, would be funded. And we do track their performance every year and then over each five year strategic plan. But as far as housing production goes, um, I mean, we, we, we were able to support, uh, the Creating Housing Coalition Development, for example, with property acquisition. You know, two hundred and plus thousand dollars doesn't go very far when it comes to actually being able to build housing. So, but we can provide that information to you.
Thank you.
We did support that project.
Thank you. My final question, you sort of just touched on something there. You mentioned that agencies have to apply and they have to see if they're eligible. Really, twenty seven of them. I'm kind of curious as to why we don't maybe pick the top five? And, and why, why is it spread so thin like that?
Um, that's a really good question. So we are required to consult with a variety of providers of services in our community because we have to demonstrate a lot of need. But we get so little money, we still have to follow all the same procedures, even if we got millions of dollars or three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. So, um, not all of those agencies need our money, but we need to understand what their role is in the spectrum of, of the services and the housing that's provided within the community. Um, and it helps, um, us be informed about what our needs are. And there are a lot of partners that, um, partner with the agencies that receive funding. So, I mean, if agencies don't need the money and they don't have an eligible activity, then they don't apply. So, I mean, but we still have to consult with more agencies than who receives funding, just to understand what's going on and, um, it's a requirement of the program.
Thank you.
And I would just note to the previous question, although this doesn't give us outcomes in some definite way, there is the table, um, in the action plan that does articulate what the outcomes are predicted to be for the next year. And we do find by and large that those are pretty, um, pretty accurate. So if that's helpful in laying any concerns about, well, what, what will come out of this, then I would.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, uh, share a little bit more insight with, uh, Counselor Novak. So prior to serving on council, I was on our Community Development Commission and where we're able to help allocate and determine like where this funding goes towards. So I know that we've, you know, given some to, uh, and a big project that I helped out with was the, uh, um, Sunrise Park Rehabilitation for that area. There are other projects that they've worked on to benefit all members of our community.
Yes.
I have a small request. Um, when you provide us these, uh, reports and you're talking about the track map, can you just provide a little snapshot of the track? I'm finding it again and I'm like, crap, can't find it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much, your presentation. Uh, we'll be now hearing public comments. Um, if anyone wishes to enter, uh, exhibit into the record as part of their testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and provide a, the clerk with a virtual, provide it to the clerk. Virtual attendees will email it to the city's provided map, uh, email address. Those who register to speak during the meeting will be called upon first. Is there anybody signed up for this?
No one, no one signed up for this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will now be taking comments from those who did not register. Does any member of the audience wish to speak about the proposed plan or community needs? If so, please state your name and make any comments you make to the city council and provide your address. I don't care for that part. Provide your address on the signup sheet. If you're attending virtually, turn on your cameras and raise your hand to be called upon. If you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Okay. Does any staff wish to respond to the comments received? There is none. I declare the public hearing closed at six thirty five, six thirty nine. Does the council wish to discuss, you know, our council wish to discuss the plan or ask questions of staff? Do I hear a motion or? Who has something to say?
Ann, did you have something? Okay.
You're good? Okay. Do I have a motion? Resolution is on page seventy two, your packet.
I would move to adopt the resolution for the City of Albany's twenty twenty four Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Programs as required by the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have, um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you very much, um, Ann and Beth. Resolution passes. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. Mr. Roche did not sign in.
He was typed in.
Oh, there it is, right there. I'm sorry. Next is, uh, first up is Ben Roach. His primary business is in Albany. He's going to speak to us regarding pride events. Thank you, Ben. And I, I look, I allowed Ben to have five minutes because he's speaking for a group of people. So I've asked him to, uh, he can have five minutes.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Mayor Johnson. Before I begin, I do want to make a point that I am speaking about adult related matters. I notice there are some, there's, at least I saw at least one child in the audience. My, my prepared statement is clean. There's no language in it that'd be inappropriate, but it is about adult nature, so please just keep that in mind. Dan Rather recently blogged the headline, "If You See Something Crazy, Report Crazy." Saturday was nothing less than crazy. It was rather outrageous what I witnessed just outside this hall. If our diverse and inclusive society, it's crucial to strike a balance between individual freedoms and the protection of vulnerable populations and particularly children. This Saturday on June twenty second at the Albany Pride event, just footsteps from this room, a vendor breathed toys, displayed leather products, including floggers, whips, paddles, for the practice of bondage, dominus, dominism, sadism and masochism, commonly known as B D S M. I sh, I thought about maybe just ignoring it, you know? Should I just ignore the harm that can come to kids that are prematurely exposed to material like this? This matter is really concerning when it occurs in events that are advertised, especially they're advertised as being family friendly, all ages. And more critically, why I'm here before you now is because it's supported by public entities, the, the Albany City Council. And we had city booths there, including Parks and Rec and the library. Children are impressionable and their early experiences play a significant role in shaping their understanding of the world. Exposure to sexualized con, content such as B D S M paraphernalia at a young age can be confusing, potentially harmful to their development. It's a responsibility of adults, us in this room, especially those in positions of authority, those of you whom we've elected, that are organizing these public events, creating these permits to allow them to create environments that are safe and appropriate for all age groups. Family friendly events should be spaces where children can explore, learn and have fun without being confronted with adult themes that they're not yet equipped to understand. Let me be clear on this part. Promoting inclusivity and diversity does not necess, necessitate exposing children to this adult content. There are appropriate venues and contexts for adult expression and activities that can be enjoyed by consenting adults without risk of exposing it to minors. We have adult shops in Albany for crying out loud. Ensuring that public spaces, particularly those advertised as family friendly, are free from sexualized content, it respects the developmental needs of children, but it still allows for adult freedom in appropriate settings. Furthermore, the display of the B D S M paraphernalia in this public space raises a broader concern about community standards of public decency. Most communities uphold a certain norms, ensure the public spaces are welcoming and appropriate for everyone. By maintaining these standards, we reinforce the idea that there are appropriate boundaries in place to protect the well-being of our youngest and our most vulnerable, our children. My concern is not in a vacuum. I shared with the broader community through a Facebook poll. Four hundred and forty six members participated. Ninety one percent agree that S and M toys are not appropriate to be displayed in a public space. Of those nine percent, or thirty six people or so, are any of them here tonight? Does anyone want to share why they believe this is appropriate and floggers and S and M products are for sale, are appropriate, are for all ages event like pride? Please help me understand. I hope some of the people in support of it maybe signed in and will speak tonight. But let me be clear, the right of free speech and expression is something that I defend and liberty is a fundamental right. One of my sons is gay. This concern comes from a sincere love for my children, the children of the community, my grandchildren and the innocent children. I despise and condemn any expression of hate to any people. I, I embrace the L G B T community. It's, it's however equally important to ensure that public spaces, especially those advertised as family friendly, are kept from sexualized content. Protecting children from exposure to these themes is not an infringement on adult freedoms but necessary measure to foster safe and nurturing environment for all. As a society, we have to prioritize the well-being of our children and make thoughtful decisions about the content that's publicly displayed, ensuring that it's suitable for audiences of all ages. I ask the council here, acknowledge the inappropriate nature of this offense. Determine sanctions necessary to guide the pride organizers and communicate to the public what preventative measures will be taken next year when they request permits for future pride festivals to be held on the public streets here in Albany. As I put down, three minutes was not enough time. Thank you for giving me five. I don't know how my time is going, but.
You're out of time, sir.
If I'm out of time, then I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments and the council will address it during business from the council. This is not a back and forth, but the business from the council. Thank you. Next is, um, Gamal Nassar. We all love him and know him as Mr. G.
Appreciate the chair. Uh, good evening, mayor, council members. First, I'd like to say thank you for all the hard work that you put in and your own personal time. I know how hard it is and, and, uh, how much time you put in, so much appreciated. And I know that the community appreciates that too. I also like to thank the staff, uh, of Albany and the work that they put in, uh, specifically towards, towards the, the community and, uh, and its safety and, and growth and livability. Um, and, and although I don't live here, the reason I wanted to introduce myself again is that I'm the new executive director for the Habitat for Humanity Albany Area. And, um, it's a dream job for me and it's something, uh, very, very, uh, close to my heart. Uh, after twenty years of social services and nonprofit management, to be able to stand back and, and turn around and see that you built something. It's not that all organizations don't help people in further the advancement of, of the human cause, but sometimes it's hard to see what you built. Um, and Habitat for Humanity, it's one of those organizations where you can turn around and see that this is what we built and the community is better for it. With that said and done, um, you, um, the city is, is presently helping the Habitat for Humanity Albany Area Habitat to build two homes and those homes are just about complete. And I would ask that, um, oh, that each of you, if you contact me, I'd love to give you a tour before we turn over the first one and the second one. And we have a couple more months before it's, it's, uh, completion. But I'd love for, for you to visit and see where some of the funds are going and maybe even meet some of the family members who will be living there. It's a wonderful process. And, um, my invite is to you and any, uh, staff that would love to do that. We'd love to give you a short tour. And, uh, our homes are as close to net zero as we can afford. Solar just went up on the houses today. And it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to see that, that these homes are being built. And I just want to thank you. Uh, maybe at some point I can come back and do a presentation and show you how many homes that, that your habitat has built in this community and the kind of impact that it's providing for our affordable housing community.
Thank you. Next up is Carolyn McLeod and Elizabeth.
Good evening, mayor, uh, councilors. My name is Carolyn McLeod. This is my daughter. She wanted to say her name.
Ellie.
This is my daughter Ellie and we live in Ward Two. We like to ride our bikes to Doug Killen Friendship Park. And, yeah, we like to ride our bikes to the park. And this, uh, this last time, uh, we, we visited, Ellie noticed, uh, that there was.
There's no bike racks.
No bike racks by the playground.
Yes.
There, there is, um, bike racks near the basketball court. And, um, Ellie was thinking that all playgrounds need bike racks for the kids that like to ride their bikes to the park and that the bike racks at the basketball car, court are too far away. So we, we decided, uh, we decided to do an ongoing, an ongoing research project about the availability of bike racks at, uh, the playgrounds at the city parks. So we visited nine of the twenty four parks, uh, within the City of Albany that have playgrounds. And we, um, rated them green, yellow or red, depending on the availability of bike racks, if they had bike racks, um, near the playgrounds, if they had them, um, at the park, but not real close to the playground or if they had no bike racks at all. And this is just a small sampling of the parks. We visited nine random parks, um, within all three wards. And we, uh, we rated three of them green, three of them yellow and three of them red. So three parks did not have bike racks at all in the entire park. Um, and only three had them at, at the playground. So Elizabeth wanted to come and talk to you about how to get bike racks at the playgrounds at each park. So that's why we're here today. She wanted to talk about bike racks. Do you want to say anything else, Elizabeth?
Uh.
About bike racks and riding your bike to the park? You don't have to put your mouth on the microphone. We like to ride our bikes to the park?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you wish that there were bike racks closer to the playground, right?
Yep.
Yep. So we'll be doing this, uh, research project throughout the summer while she's not in school. She starts kindergarten this fall at, uh, at Liberty. And, uh, we will come back when we have visited all twenty four parks with playgrounds within the City of Albany to talk more about the availability of bike racks at our city playgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie, for coming today. Uh, next on tonight's agenda, our friend Ray Hiltz will be speaking to us. I'm guessing I know what this is about.
Yes, you can guess what this is about. Let's see, you want my address and? No, just, I'm from Albany.
Yep.
And, uh, anyway, I'm a lion. And each year I show up and ask for you to come out to our breakfast between six and eleven. If you'd like to volunteer, great. If you'd like to volunteer, great, but I think it's important that at one time during these four days that you go out and talk with your constituents because they need to get to know you. So that's very important. This year, we did not raise a price. It's still $10 for all you can eat. We are taking credit cards this year. It's one of the first times, so we'll see with the big lineups how much longer people have to wait. But last year, we served 5,009 meals, and we're looking at 6,000 this year. And it looks like the weather is going to be pretty nice. So I invite all of you. I know some of you were there last year, so I want to thank you for being there, and if you sleep in, that's fine. You can come at 9:00 or 10:00. But anyway, thank you for allowing me to invite you.
It's on my calendar. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll be there.
Yep, it's on my calendar. Does anyone in the chambers would like to speak to business from the council for three minutes? If not, I'll move on to the agenda. Thank you. Adoption of resolutions. Next, item five is appeal. Applied to Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant, Chris LaBelle, Fire Chief Chris LaBelle,
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council. So the request this evening is for us to apply for a $75,000 grant through the state Fire Marshal's Office. After the wildfires in 2020, the Fire Marshal's Office started offering different grants related to staffing, equipment, different projects to kind of be proactive in the communities. This one is specific to defendable space, and we've already identified an area if we were to get the grant, and that location is just west of 53rd, the Spring Meadow neighborhood, and then all that area west towards the Calipia River. There's already been a little bit of work done to that area. The homeowners association did a little bit of defensible space right up against the neighborhood, but we've identified that as an area that needs a lot more work. So if we get permission from the council and we get this grant, it's 100% fully funded. There's no match or anything. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilors, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Counselor Smith?
Any possibility that you're going to use goats? It's a big piece of property for goats.
It is. No, not on this one.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a pretty neat thing that we did, though.
Anytime you can work that in, it's...
Absolutely.
Love it.
Yeah, I've watched those videos of goats cleaning out properties and stuff. It's amazing.
It is amazing.
They literally eat everything.
Yeah.
Any other councilors have anything? Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution approving application of the 2024 Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant through the Oregon State Fire Marshal for vegetation removal not to exceed $75,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next, item B is special procurement of VLR replacement. Craig Prosser, pages 124 to 127 in your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Tonight, you have before you a special procurement packet concerning our VLR turning vein replacement project. Two previous projects we had, we...
Can you tell the public what the VLR is?
Thank you. Vertical Loop Reactor. It's easier to say VLR if you don't mind continuing with that.
Oh, no, please.
Two previous projects, we undertook. The first one, we had to use original equipment from the manufacturer, and it was hot-dip galvanized equipment, which doesn't hold up in the corrosive environment of wastewater. So the two projects were awarded to MPP Piping out of SIO, and he learned some valuable experience working on the first project and was able to fabricate out of stainless steel. So the second project, we came in at about half the price of the first project. We're asking for the special procurement so we continue on with the other projects that we are facing. We have four potential projects with the remaining turning veins, and we can save the city a substantial amount of money by going through the special procurement. Is there any questions on this packet?
Council, do you have any questions? Counselor?
I think it's pretty cool that we're using parts from our neighbors, so...
Yes.
Very neat.
Local, right?
Yeah. I like it.
So there's a resolution on page 127 in your packet, or 126, excuse me. Do we have a motion?
I'd move to adopt the resolution for the city council acting as the local contract review board waiving competitive bidding and awarding a special procurement contract to MPP Piping and authorizing the public works director to award and execute a contract with MPP Piping for vertical loop reactor maintenance and replacement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your presentation. Next on tonight's agenda is an award. Item six is award of a contract, banking and procurement card services, Director Jaeger, Finance Director Jaeger, pages 127 to 130 in your packet. Resolution's on page 130.
Good evening. We recently went out for an RFP for banking services. It had been quite a while since we had done that. We had three responsive proposals from JP Morgan, Chase, Wells Fargo, and then US Bank. We originally had gone out for banking services, procurement, cards, and then also merchant services, which is how we process credit cards. We later received some information telling us from our ERP, our Munis, our software, that we couldn't necessarily use one of those merchant services for this. They are a little bit... They tell us which ones we can use, so we dropped that from this RFP. So we would like to award a contract for procurement services as well as a contract for banking services, procurement cards and business... gosh, sorry. Banking services, procurement cards to Wells Fargo. We had a committee that went through the RFPs, and we rated them, and then we had an additional team do the interviews and the demos, and Wells Fargo just came out on top. For cost, for services, it was pretty close, but this is the choice that we would like to go with. So we're just asking that you approve a resolution that allows us to enter into a contract with them and that I can sign that contract when it's negotiated.
Counsel? I do have a question. You know, we watch the news a lot. I mean, I know most of us do watch the news. Wells Fargo's been in the news a lot about their practices. Are you guys comfortable with what you've seen or they've cleaned those acts up?
So we have received good references for them. They were one of the three companies that we actually received references, not... we didn't get references for everybody. We also have terminology in the contract that if something were to happen, we could term that contract.
So it's a five-year, one-year?
It's a five-year contract, and then if we choose to extend it, it would be another five years.
And would that come back for council approval or is that automatic?
It would be an automatic extension, but if we're not happy with the job that they're doing, we will certainly hear about it, you know, not just from other staff members. I'm sure council members will hear about it, and we take that very seriously when we look at whether or not we want to extend or whether we want to go out for another RFP.
Could I ask for that city council, that five-year window, bring a report back to them?
Sure. Let me put that note in here.
So you know how they're performing against our expectations?
I will put that in my notes.
Yeah, inspect what you expect, right? Counsel, we have a... she's on page 128 to 130. The resolution's on page 130.
I move we approve a resolution awarding a contract to Wells Fargo Portland, Oregon for banking and procurement card services and authorizing the finance director to enter into a contract with Wells Fargo to provide banking and procurement card services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your motion passes. Have a good evening. Next, approval agreement, IGA for shared equipment, Chris, Chief LaBelle, page 131 to 135 in your packet. It's okay to call you chief, right?
What's that?
Is it okay to call you chief already?
Sure.
Okay.
You're the mayor. You can call me whatever. Okay, so this request is to enter an IGA with the city of Corvallis for the purpose of using their hands-on fire prevention prop. So basically, this is a large inflatable structure that kids can walk through. It has different fire safety messages on it. Our department was actually looking at purchasing one, and they're about $7,000, and Corvallis had told us they had just purchased one, and they were happy to share it with us. So it's a win-win. We get to provide this great tool for fire prevention, and we get to save $7,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Nelson?
Are we paying them anything?
No.
That's cool.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we break it, though, we should help them pay.
Yeah, I'm sure that's what's in the IGA, yes.
I just have to say that was the funnest part of the whole packet, was reading through it, and I'm like, is this a bouncy house but for education?
It's not exactly a bouncy house. That's what we were... Chief Wood and I were concerned about, that of the liability. So it's an inflatable that you walk through.
Not a bouncy house.
Yeah.
That's awesome, though.
It is. It's pretty neat.
And yeah, that's all I have to say. That's great.
Thank you. You have anything? We have a resolution on page 130? Oh, excuse me, on 135. I'm sorry. I'm way ahead. I'm going backwards. Do you have a motion to approve?
I would move to approve the IGA with the city of Corvallis for sharing their unbouncy house, their inflatable house.
Oh, have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Your agreement passes. Next is IGA with Lynn County Transit Lodging Tax Collection, Director Jaeger, on page 136 to 142 in your packet. The agreement, the resolution is on page 137. Welcome back.
I know, I feel like it's Chief LaBelle and me trading places. So we have been... we've had an IGA with Lynn County since 2018 for the collection of transient lodging taxes. That contract or the agreement has expired, and we would like to continue the relationship with them. We... it's been very easy for us. We are able to collect their portion of the transient lodging tax along with ours, and we remit payment to them quarterly, and for doing that work, we receive a 5% of those fees. So we would like to continue that, and we just need approval from council to do that.
I have a question.
Please, Counsel.
Is this going to be impacted at all once we start collecting the short-term rentals? Or is that not... It would just decrease the amount. You'll have to pay them. We'll have to pay them, right? Yeah.
So we will... we collect 9% for the city of Albany, 3% for Lynn County, and we will continue to do that, and we just pay them the amount that we collect on their behalf, net the 5% that we get to keep.
So nothing in the contract specifies this is for long-term versus short-term. It's not going to affect the contract at all?
It shouldn't. If anything, it might... we might have to put an addendum on it just to call it out a little bit more, depending, especially if we use like a third party to help us with that short-term rental collections that are non-hotels. But I think it should be a relatively easy process to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel? Oh, Counselor Newton?
I have a quick question. So you mentioned where we're giving them their cut quarterly, correct?
Right.
Do we place those funds at all? Like, do we earn any additional interest, and do we keep that?
So we collect... generally, we collect TLTs monthly, and we keep those funds. So when a hotel or a short-term rental pays us for a month, they usually have till the end of the next month to give us that funding. So when we collect the TLTs for Lynn County, it just goes into our bank account, and then we just remit the amount that we collected for them, net that 5%. So, you know, we don't pay out interest on it to them. We just... it's part of our agreement.
Okay. Sounds great.
Counselor Smith?
Let me ask the question before somebody else does. Does this money go into our lodging tax account, or does it go to the general fund? This is a fee for service, correct? It's not lodging tax that we would use as lodging tax.
The 5% that we...
Yeah.
No, that actually, it goes into the central service fund.
Okay.
Because finance is doing the work of collecting that money, tracking it, and then cutting the check to Lynn County.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Novak?
I was just wanting to check in on the idea of creating heads in beds, which is what I think I understood TLT is about, and I'm wondering if this funding is actually doing that. I'm not talking about the money that you take for the service that you do in collecting those funds.
Lynn County's portion of it? I don't know what they're doing with that money. I don't. We just collect it for them, and they spend it however they see fit.
And our portion, you just said, is going into the...
It goes into our central service program to help support the time that our staff uses to collect those funds. We do the yearly audits, so that's... we have to go out and we audit three or four hotels each year, and then we have to process the payment to Lynn County. So that money helps support that work.
Okay. I understand that. I guess somewhere along the lines, I thought that money that the hotels and short-term rentals collect is supposed to go toward tourism in the sense of getting heads in beds, and maybe I have completely misunderstood what that's about.
I think you're talking about two different...
Okay, that's... okay.
The 5% goes into the...
No, I know what the 5% does. So I guess this is a... my query is for a different topic at another time when we're discussing actual TLT instead of what you're doing, collecting the funds.
So the money we collect for Lynn County that we remit to them, they are to use 70% for tourism-related activities, 30% for whatever they want to spend it on. They did the... they opted to do a TLT later after, you know, the whole thing got grandfathered in at the rates, and so that's a 70-30 split according to the state.
Okay.
So 70% of the money that we remit to them does go towards tourism or should be going towards tourism, if that's the question you're asking.
That is the question, and I appreciate your patience and your answer.
No, that's okay. I don't know exactly how they're doing that in support of tourism, but I do know that according to ORS, 70% of that should be spent on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So on your agreement, there's your resolution on page 137.
I'll move the resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Lynn County to provide transient lodging tax collections for five years.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next, on the calendar, excuse me, the agenda is adoption of the consent agenda. Counsel?
Move we adopt the consent calendar as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next is a staff report, pavement management, funding discussion. Director Bailey, is she here tonight?
Is she?
Oh, there she is, right there. I'm looking back there where the staff usually sits, but she's acting city manager tonight, too. I'm looking back there where the staff usually sits, but she's acting city manager tonight, too.
Thank you, I'm going to sit here because the sound is better. Fight that microphone. Okay, well, good evening, Mayor and Council, it's been a few months since our last discussion on street funding, so I'm here with an update and a recommendation for you, so I'll try to get through this quickly. So far, we've given you four presentations on this topic. Today, I'm going to quickly review what we've covered to this point before providing the department's recommendation for local funding for street maintenance. I'm also going to give a brief look at some results from our public opinion research that we've been doing. Keep in mind that that work is not fully complete yet, but and we'll come back and share the report once it's done, but we do have some good insights that I think will be helpful for tonight's discussion. And as usual, I'll give my standard disclaimer that costs, estimates of potential revenue, and estimates of work per dollar are educated guesses, but they're still not, shouldn't be considered set in stone. So, I'm going to go over, for the public's benefit and to refresh all of you, some things that we've covered over the last nine or ten months or something. In one of our first meetings, we shared approximate costs to perform various types of road maintenance, so that's what's in this table. So, PCI, as a reminder, stands for Pavement Condition Index, which is a rating of the condition of the street pavement. And for roads in good condition, which is a PCI of greater than eighty, we can do routine maintenance treatment such as crack sealing, which is very inexpensive, and we can do in-house, or a slurry seal, which costs about four to five dollars per square yard. Slurry seal is actually a really good treatment because it can delay a more intense maintenance requirement for years, if not decades, on local streets. Then, as you move down the PCI scale, the maintenance requirements become more expensive. We might be able to postpone or delay a much more expensive project on a street in fair condition with a chip seal, but chip seals are not always a good treatment option, depending on the street and its use and conditions. For instance, we don't want to chip seal a heavily traveled street, we would, that would not last, and we would get complaints. Fair streets generally are more likely to need a grind and overlay, which is a much more involved process, and, and much more expensive, as you can see. Street surfaces that are poor or failed require full reconstruction, either using a slightly less expensive technique known as full-depth reclamation, or a traditional dig-it-all-up-and-reconstruct-it, which is very expensive. So if you invest in maintaining your street while it's still in the sixty to seventy PCI range, you can restore it back to nearly new condition for one quarter to one-fifth of the cost if, then if you let it drop to a condition below forty. In other words, every dollar of street work you spend in good or fair condition would cost four to five dollars on the same street if you let it get into poor condition. And I am sure all of you could recreate this drawing in your sleep, but to explain it to those who aren't familiar, what this graph is showing is on the vertical axis, a pavement condition, and on the horizontal axis is time. The downward sloping curve on the graph represents the condition of any given street, and when it's first constructed up at the top left, the street is in very good condition, but it will degrade over time due to use and weather and just other damage. And that degradation occurs slowly at first, but then it reaches a point where the slope of the curve steepens, and the street fails at a faster rate. This curve is actually scientifically built by people who study streets, and represents typically how streets degrade over time, regardless of where they're built, and what surface condition, what surface material you use. So in this example, minor repairs and maintenance are done while the road is in good condition, and those are illustrated by the thicker dark blue lines that sort of reset the curve back up towards the top. So, on here, on this graph, over time, the curve is reset, first using crack sealing, and then, and then later grind and overlays performed over the years. Conversely, if those minor maintenance activities are not done, the degradation would follow the thinner black line until the road surface is down in poor condition, and at that point, the only treatment that would restore the surface to good condition is full reconstruction. So following that scenario, the street surface is not maintained, it reaches poor condition, and gets reconstructed, would need to be reconstructed twice over this time period. So what you end up with is, for the same period of time, if you do routine minor maintenance, you might spend seventy dollars per square yard on a, on an overlay, three times, for a total of two hundred and ten dollars per square yard. But if you don't do that, you would have to spend four hundred dollars per square yard, twice, at eight hundred dollars per square yard over the same time period, so that's a good representation of how it's four times more expensive to let your street fail, rebuild it, rather than invest, so I know I'm beating a, a horse for all of you, but this is the ideal way to manage streets, and this is the strategy that we follow on our arterial and collector streets. The strategy only works for routine investments in ma, in minor maintenance, only works if the road is actually in good or fair condition. And so our roads that have already failed would not be able to have those smaller investments, and in order to do this, you have to have the money to, to do this. And we'll get into that in just a second. This table shows the current Pavement Condition Index for Albany streets. So remember, streets are classified as arterials, which are those that connect one side of town to another, they have the highest traffic volumes. Then we have collectors, which generally collect local streets to arterial streets, and have moderate traffic, and then local streets, which are those that provide access to private properties such as residential areas and have the lowest traffic volumes. So in this table, our arterial and collector streets are in fair to good condition for the most part. We only have three and a half miles of those streets combined that are in poor condition, and in actuality, many of those are really small street segments that just haven't been improved. Local streets are another story. Almost forty percent of local streets are in good condition, which is good, but another almost forty percent are in poor condition, and then there's a smaller fraction in the middle. These numbers are a direct result of the city's goals regarding street maintenance. So, for many years, as long as I've worked here, the direction from council has been to maintain arterials and collectors, which are the streets that almost everybody in town uses, to a PCI of sixty or greater, and to address local street condition as funding allows. So, we focus on arterials and collector streets, which they have been receiving maintenance, in our best effort to follow that strategy of investing while the street is still good. The local street story is quite different. Most of the local streets that are in good condition and fair condition are those that were built with new development that happened over the last ten to twenty years. So if you think about any recent subdivision that has been built, those are local streets, and those are typically in good condition. As those subdivisions are built, we require the developer to build the roads within that neighborhood to city standards. And so they haven't had time to seriously degrade. You can contrast that with the local streets in the older parts of town. And although neither street has received much, if any, targeted maintenance, the local streets in the older part of town are significantly worse because they've just been there for longer. So they've degraded, they're further down the slide on that street failure curve. If we don't do anything to the streets in the newer neighborhoods, they're going to look just like that over time. So this difference in time of construction is what's giving us this disparity in these condition indexes for local streets, it's not that we're investing in one part of town or another, we're not, we're not investing in really any of our local streets. And that has been a decision that has been made, because we don't have enough money, and the, the focus was on the streets that were most used. So, as I mentioned, the city's strategic plan has had an objective for years to keep arterials and collectors at this higher PCI, and no stated objective for local streets. So, in general, staff develops capital projects every budget cycle to repair and rebuild the busier streets with available funding, and then we do local street projects where we're able to find funds. So, we might get grant funding, for instance, to do some improvements near a school, or bike and ped improvements that we might be able to sneak in some paving and call it the bike lane. Don't, don't tell anybody I said that. We also might get some infill development, or we might be able to complete small pavements with our own equipment in-house pavement projects. At the January twenty-second work session, I presented a concept of the new level of service goal for streets, and the council agreed that in addition to keeping the arterial and collector PCI goal of being greater than sixty, we're going to add a goal for local streets, so it's a two-part goal. One will keep those streets that are in fair and good condition above a PCI of sixty, just like arterials and collectors, and the streets that are below fifty, or below sixty, we will invest in as we can to get them above and keep them above sixty over time. In order to do that, we need more money, so let's talk about money. I'm sure you remember this table. This lists are currently available sources of revenue for the street fund. Now, the street fund does more than just maintain pavement, so this is funding for all street fund activities. First, we have state gas tax, state gas tax is limited by law to work only on maintenance and operation of the existing street system. Most of our state gas tax revenue is dedicated to pay for our street maintenance program in our operations division. That group does many things, which includes minor street repairs, including crack sealing, pothole repairs, small asphalt patching, but they also do other work not related to pavement maintenance. They stripe all of our roads, they paint all the curbs, they paint the stop bars and the railroad signs, they install all street signs and maintain them throughout the entire city. They maintain our traffic signals, they maintain street tree vegetation in partnership with parks, they do repairs to curb gutters and sometimes sidewalks, they do street sweeping, so they do all this other work in addition to small pavement repairs, and that's where most of the state gas tax money goes. Some of the state gas tax money goes to the street capital fund. That fund pays for larger street maintenance projects like we're talking here. Then we have federal gas tax revenue, that does not come to the city directly, we have to apply for it through the Metropolitan Planning Organization in our region, and the region receives an allocation of federal gas tax through the state. So we apply for those funds, and we have to define the project and compete with other jurisdictions in our region for those funds. Those funds can only be used on arterial and collector projects. Then we have system development charges. One type of SDC is limited only to projects that are identified in the Transportation System Plan, or TSP, that add capacity to the system on arterials and collectors only. An example of that would be adding a turn lane, or adding an additional travel lane, that would add capacity. The other type of SDC revenue can be spent on any project identified in the TSP. And finally, our most flexible source of funding, which comes from our own water and sewer funds, and we pay into the street fund and in lieu of franchise fee, just like we charge to the private franchise utilities we charge ourselves, seven percent in lieu of franchise fee goes directly to the street fund. So this is another table that you've seen before, it shows the average amount available to spend on pavement improvements over the last five years per year by funding source. So altogether, we have about three million dollars per year to spend on street capital projects. This is not the total amount of revenue in the street fund, this is the amount left over after we pay for operations and maintenance and overhead, those types of things, this is only the available funding for capital projects. On average, over the last five years, we've had about three million dollars per year. Now, three million dollars is quite a bit more than we had in, prior to House Bill twenty seventeen, which raised the state gas tax a couple of pennies a year for a few years in a row now. Our state gas tax revenue has gone up significantly, to the point that before House Bill twenty seventeen, it took a hundred percent of our state gas tax, plus some of our in lieu of franchise fee money, to pay just for street maintenance operations. Now, state gas tax by itself pays for all of street maintenance, and then we have some left over to pay for some capital. So that increase in state gas tax was very meaningful for, for us. In addition, we also have the stormwater utility, which you may or may not enjoy, but the stormwater utility includes money to pay for the stormwater portion of street projects. Prior to the stormwater utility, the street fund paid for the stormwater portion of street projects, so both of those things have allowed us to actually do more street capital work than we did, say, seven or eight years ago. Let's see, but, to keep it in perspective, three million dollars is not a lot. For instance, the street project that happened last summer that reconstructed Queen Avenue from Highway ninety-nine to the city limits, just that little section, was a four million dollar project. So that one moderately-sized street capital project consumed more than one full year's of street capital funding. So that's, hopefully provides some perspective on how much we can get done with what we have, which is we, we typically have to save for more than one year to get any given street capital project done, and there's nothing left over to rebuild a local street.
How much was it again?
It was budgeted for four million dollars, I'm not sure exactly how much it came in at, but it was somewhere around four million dollars. Okay, so this table, what this table is saying is, our staff used the model that we have that contains our street condition data to ask how much investment we would need to make in all of our streets to get all of our streets up to a PCI of sixty or greater and keep them there within forty years. So this table is those results, so, the model says that in order to accomplish that goal, we would need to spend fifteen point eight million dollars per year for forty years to get all of our streets to and maintain them above a PCI of sixty. So that breaks down to an annual need to spend four million dollars on arterials and collectors, three and a half million on the good local streets, and eight point three million on the failed local streets. We currently have available to us a total of three million dollars, and we are currently spending two and a half on arterials and collectors, and we shave off half a million dollars for the slurry seal program, which can go on any street, but we're typically doing residential streets with that. And so that leaves a funding gap of twelve point eight million dollars per year, if we wanted to accomplish this forty-year goal. So, forty years is a long time. But, twelve point eight million dollars is an unreasonable amount of money for us to try to get in, in addition to what we currently have, so in reality, if we want to get all of our roads up to a PCI of over sixty, it's going to take more than forty years. That's, that's the message of this slide. So all of that information, and we went over all of that in much more detail, which the public or anyone's interested is welcome to go to the city's website and just type in "street maintenance," and you'll get all of this, access to all of these presentations and, and memos. But all of that is the foundation for why we began discussing with the council a new local funding source. And we did, we also talked at a previous meeting about all of the various options of funding available to us, and they're all still possible, but at the last meeting in January, the direction we received was to look more closely at a local fuel tax and a transportation utility. So, we did that. And you might remember that, at that council meeting, support was mixed, some counselors preferred one or the other, some preferred both. So I'm going to discuss what our recommendation is, and go into a little bit of our research we did, and then the public opinion research. we did and then the public opinion research. Start with the local fuel tax. So, the local fuel tax is a mixed bag. On the one hand, we would expect to get some revenue from users of our streets who do not live in Albany but drive on our roads. So, that's always a positive thing. And a fuel tax on its surface appears to be a logical way to have those who drive more pay more, but it's more complicated than that. First, the amount of revenue we would reasonably expect to receive with the fuel tax is not going to be a significant annual revenue to help us get towards that funding gap. We talked with ODOT Fuel's group, and they gave us some new information on fuel cells in Albany. We used some reasonable assumptions to try to figure out which ones of those, it's by ZIP code. Some of the ZIP codes are not actually within the city limits, so we did some estimating. And we refined our estimate of per penny revenue to $400,000, which we had previously used $300,000 based on Springfield. So, we think $400,000 per penny of tax is what we could expect. Almost every jurisdiction that has a local fuel tax has a 3-cent gas tax. Portland is an outlier. They have a 10-cent gas tax. I would not recommend we would pursue a 10-cent gas tax. So, again, assuming reasonably that we could convince people to vote for support of a 3-cent gas tax, what we can reasonably expect to receive would be $1.2 million, plus or minus, per year. Recall that just to close the funding gap for arterial and collector needs, we need $1.5 million. So, this doesn't even help us on just that category of streets. I mean, it helps us, but it doesn't get us all the way there. We also looked at the last three years of revenue over several years in three comparable jurisdictions, and over the last five years, all of them have seen flat to declining revenue from their gas tax. This, even if you don't count the COVID year, still flat or declining for all three jurisdictions. Additionally, we talked with some people who know about these things about how do jurisdictions get gas taxes passed? And research has found that if you put a transportation measure, whether it's a fuel tax or a bond, or whatever else, on a ballot, those types of issues generally do better in off-year elections when there's no major national political driver for elections. So, it's a local issue usually does better if it's just, there's just local issues on the ballot. And as we know firsthand, local fuel tax measures are almost guaranteed to fail when there is not a significant preceding outreach and education effort at least a year, and even then, you're not guaranteed success. So, all of these factors combined with the public opinion results that I'm going to share in just a minute lead us to recommend that we do not pursue a local fuel tax right now, but we would hold it in our back pocket as an option for future years when the timing might be right to try to get it on a ballot. So, I'll share a little bit more information about what we heard from the public on that in just a second. We also looked more deeply into a transportation utility fee or a TOF. Those fees are also called street maintenance fees, pavement maintenance fees. Different jurisdictions call them different things. And like all of our utilities, the structure of a utility is, often varies between communities. So, a utility charge can be structured anywhere from very simple to quite complex, and usually that same scale also is a scale of equitability. So, very simple tends to not be equitable, very complex tends to be more tailored and more equitable. So, I have some examples listed here. It ranges from a flat fee, everybody pays X dollars a month regardless of what your property is. If it's developed, you pay this much a month, all the way up to a combination of property type and trip generation potential based on international transportation standards, which would make the charge quite a bit more tailored to how the property is being used, but it takes a bit more administrative work on staff's part to keep that charge accurate for the property use. Let's see. Developing these utility structures is very data-intensive. We've talked with our consultant, and would take several months. It would involve multiple presentations back to council to discuss the mechanism, the way it would actually be structured, our revenue target, what you want to do with revenue, and where you want to set the rate. So, that would take many months, and then we would come back to you with a rate resolution, and we feel like we could do this in time to generate revenue in this utility sometime in the next biennium. I mentioned earlier that we hired a consultant to do public opinion research. That work is not complete yet, but we do have some initial results that I think are really interesting and important to share. So, they had three tasks. They've completed two of them. One of those tasks was a community leader interview. I think they spoke individually with most of you, if not all of you, as well as some other names that we gave them of members of various city commissions, various leaders in the community. And the other thing that they've done is public focus groups. So, they had two public focus groups, and the key conclusions from both of those tasks on the slide. So, the community leader group was generally quite a bit more knowledgeable about funding, street maintenance, et cetera, because you've been put through these presentations so many times, than the general public. General public had essentially no understanding of how funding for streets work, what our efforts have been, where we are. Everyone, though, in both groups agreed that road conditions are bad. Universal statement. In fact, the focus groups identified road and transportation issues as the most important issue than any other issue, including homelessness, drug use, and cost of living. Both groups also commented on fairness or equitability, so that's important to generally everyone, and the need to be transparent about available funding, future funding, and how it's used. Everyone is concerned about the impact of additional costs on the community, but one interesting thing that came out of the focus groups, which is real, I find really interesting, was that there was sort of a universally strong sense of care for the community and an expression of a need for the city to take care of its own issues, and we need to take care of our own town, and generally support for something that would help us care for our community. I thought that was really interesting. Another thing that came out of the focus groups was general resistance to a fuel tax. Some people brought up the general belief that people who use the roads more buy more gas, and therefore, a tax, gas tax, is more fair. But several others identified the use of electric vehicles as a significant concern. There were specific comments about there are more EVs, EVs do not pay fuel tax, EVs are heavier, and there's a belief that EVs are more likely to be owned by wealthier people, and so therefore, a gas tax would affect lower-income drivers more because they're less likely to own an electric vehicle. When asked to choose, more participants in the focus group, they were given three options: a street maintenance fee, no additional funding, and a gas tax. More people chose a street maintenance fee than nothing, and gas tax was far and away their least favorite option. Comments on the utility fee was that after it was explained to them that, and they learned about it, that they thought that it was fair for the community and a dependable source of funding, which was important to them. So, there was a lot more, and we don't even have their final report yet. It's really kind of interesting, if you like this kind of thing. It's going to give us a lot of direction in how to create and deliver outreach messages, regardless of what we do. But when we get the final report back, we'll come back and share that with you. So, based on that and our own research and the pros and cons of gas tax and utility fees, we're recommending that we move forward in establishing a transportation utility. So, the reasons for that, a utility has far more flexibility than a gas tax. The council can direct us to phase in the utility charge to get to an annual revenue target over time, which is what we do with stormwater. You can create credits or a low-income assistance program that you can't do with a tax. It's indirect, but if we base the utility on the ITE trip generation, you do recover money from those businesses in town that attract regional users. So, indirect, but we might get, you might consider that as funding that comes and helps pay for visitors from out of town coming to Albany for our services. The timing of putting a gas tax on the ballot is not right, right now. Ideally, we would recommend waiting at least one year, if not two years, and then have the best opportunity to get something on the ballot based on the research and giving ourselves enough time to communicate with the voters in town. Additionally, and I just remind you that anything we put on the ballot, once you vote to put it on the ballot, we can't conduct any outreach or education, or it's considered electioneering, and we get fined. And then finally, my final reason is that the estimate of fuel tax revenue is not significant, and it's likely to decline as we, unless the state figures out a way to address the EV problem. We would like to hold on to the possibility of fuel tax in the future, and one strategy that we discussed internally was we could dedicate local fuel tax revenue to arterials and collector streets only, since those are the busiest streets that most people use, whether they're from town or not from town, and that there might be other strategies like that that we could use if we want to consider a gas tax in the future. We also don't want to forget about bonds, general obligation bonds. We're not recommending bonding a project right now, but several communities in the state have had success getting bonds passed when they package them with specific projects that are targeted towards goals that are important to the community. So, that's another thing that we want to hang on to as an option in the future. So, the next, it's clear we need to do outreach and education, and we've done this before. We've actually done it before with street maintenance, and so we dust all that off, bring it up to speed, use what we're learning from the public opinion research. And one of the interesting things we got from this research as well is, the focus group participants gave input on where they thought we could, how they thought we could be effective at getting our message out to people. So, there's lots of, which we're always trying to figure out, like, where do you get your information? How can we reach you? And so, there's some of that in there. So, we have a lot of work to do. It's hard enough to educate seven people. Now, we need to educate, you know, 20,000 or so adults, 40,000 adults? How many adults we have in town? 60,000 if you want to consider children, too. But we have, so it's a big lift, but that's our next step. So, that's the end of my presentation, and what I would really like is, I don't need a motion, but some direction on if you would like to bring back an ordinance. The first step in a utility, setting a utility, is passing an ordinance that gives the city the legal authority to charge that fee. And if you want to bring that back, we would like to bring that back this summer, which would then, if it passes, would give us time to begin working on that. So, that's it.
Counselor Novak, Heather Endo first.
Yeah, thanks. I think it's premature to consider an ordinance before we see the report.
I agree. The public opinion report?
Yes.
What is the timeline on that report?
We're supposed to have their final report in late July, so that was, we were going to bring it to, hopefully, the last work session in July.
I have another question as well. With regard to that focus group, did the people in the focus group and the stakeholders in that group, all of them live in city limits?
Yes. So, they detailed their methodology for selecting focus group participants. I'm probably not going to remember everything, but they created a demographic profile of adults in Albany, and they contacted people that met that general demographic profile using, and they focused on people who voted, I think, in at least one of the last three elections, so they're likely voters, and across a range of income levels, age, gender, location, you know, where they lived, census block, and I forget, race, I forget. So, it was a swath. And, and this might be controversial, they used current techniques to try to generate interest and participation in public opinion groups, meaning they paid them to be there and fed them. And so, because you can't get people to participate in a public opinion focus group who are working, who have to consider childcare, who, you know, it's really hard to get people to participate. You wind up with, it's like when we do focus groups, we get the same seven people every time that show up. So, they got a statistically valid sample of the community to participate in the focus group, groups.
Counselor Smith.
When we created the city services fee, the council voted on that because it was a fee and not a tax. How is the transportation utility fee different from that?
It's the same. It's just another utility fee. You have to create an ordinance, and then you, the structure of the fee is defined in resolution. So, the ordinance gives the city the legal ability to establish the fee, and then the resolution sets what it is. You can pass both of them at the same time if you do that. That's what we did with stormwater, if you remember that situation, so.
But you're talking about taking this to the voters.
No, I'm not. I'm asking the council if you want us to bring back an ordinance this summer for you to vote on. That would be helpful because then we would know for sure we can get started on the rate resolution over the next period of months and bring all of those discussions back to you.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
I have a. I do wish to have you bring back an ordinance. I think that we do need to move forward with this. I know the survey will be helpful in our messaging and other things, but I know that we've been talking about this for so many months, and there's no other ideas that we have come up with. This is the idea, and so I think we need to move forward with this. I also want to make sure that we're chasing the tax idea, because if we miss that window, then we're now six years out because you're going to want to keep it in an off-year election. So, I want to make sure that we're not going to miss that window, but I'm interested in chasing both those options. As I indicated before, I think, you know, a local tax is something that we can, I understand that revenues are flat and reducing. That's happening across the board. That's a problem that, like you said, unless the city comes, or the state comes up with, the feds come up with something, that's going to happen. But I think that it's, we're going to need both these to help us get that gap filled because it's a big gap. Otherwise, we're going to just have a lot of roads that are not great. And as you indicated, early results say that the citizens are saying, this is the most important thing, so we need to work on it now.
Counselor Luthen.
I have a few questions. What was the size of the focus group?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I think, I want to say like 26 or something.
So, it's not statistically relevant for the size of the city, correct?
It's not, it's not a huge, no, it's not a huge number of people.
Okay. Do we know how many electric vehicles are in the city of Albany?
I don't know.
Is that something we can get from DMV?
Maybe.
They do, they do take your, when we register your vehicle, they take your address, they take the make, they take the model. Did, I'm curious, so I know that a lot of folks in the city also received a, like a push poll on their phones.
Yes.
Was there ever any polling on the gas tax? I only saw in that push poll stuff about the fee.
I don't know. I didn't receive the poll, which is probably good, and so I don't know what the questions were. And we have, that's the third task that we haven't received the report on yet, so I don't know what the questions were.
Yeah, it seems quite premature. I also want to mention, I don't know why it was brought up multiple times about getting something on the ballot. It's already too late to get something on the November ballot. That's really a moot point. We'd be looking at the next off-year election, which would be, you know, 2026. So, I just think that was a moot point to even bring that up. It seemed like it was just a specific deterrent for implementing a gas tax versus a fee.
She had her hand up first.
Thank you. I, I take issue with the fact that this is being presented to us as though there are only two options, and here's what they are. There's the tough, and there's a gas tax. I want to bring your attention to the fact that we have a budget. And it is not my saying it now for the first time, like your ears have never heard before, that maybe we need to look at our budget and get back to basics. I'm going to repeat things that I know counselors from the past have said out loud. Historically, I know for a fact that Counselor Kellum spoke about this, and he wasn't the only one. But I would greatly encourage reviewing our budget and maybe looking at things. I think it's possible that we're providing services that the general public isn't asking for. And I would really, before we go creating a new fee, I, I want to look at our budget and see, how can we put the basic maintenance of our roads, which to me is a basic item and which it seems that people who live in this town support as something very basic and very important to them, rather than creating a new fee to come out of their pockets to cover something that should be provided by the city, because it's basic to city services, I would, I would like consideration of what are we providing perhaps that people aren't even asking for? What bells and whistles could we possibly cut in order to make room in our budget for something as basic as caring for our roads? And again, I would like to see the report before I am willing to, I, I just, I really have issues with the creation of yet another fee in order to provide basic services. Thank you.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Well, I strongly concur with Counselor Monague's position. We've been kicking this can down the road for years, and I keep trying to educate people that don't seem to want to be educated. That's a whole different story. But we're, that's why we get paid the big bucks, is to make hard decisions. And I have no qualms about saying that transportation utility fee is the right thing to do just to get us started, and even that is not even going to be coming close to what we need. So I have no idea where Counselor Novak is coming up with ideas that what she wants to cut, but I think that's a whole separate discussion from what we're trying to do right now. So I'm strongly in favor of at least getting the ordinance started to come up with the methodology for a transportation utility fee.
Because all, all that's needed is a thumbs up to bring back an ordinance in the future.
Right, so maybe if I, let's discuss timing just quickly. So we expect to get the report from, on the, and all it is, is public opinion research. That's all that's in that report. So there, it's not going to give you any answers on budget questions. And we expect to get that in, in time to have it back for the last council week in July. So we could bring that report back and discuss that. And then there is one meeting in August, first meeting, whatever the week of August is. And if the council, after seeing the public opinion report at that time, wants to have an ordinance brought back, we could bring it back in August. We don't, we don't have to bring an ordinance back in August. The advantage that I see is it's clear direction. And Counselor Novak, to your point, you're exactly right there. We talked about lots of ways to fund street maintenance. There's, there's a lot of opportunities out there. The reason we're talking only about these two things is because in January, that was the direction we received. So we work based on council direction. So if you tell us, we would like an ordinance to come back so that you can debate and discuss, and then vote on the ordinance one way or the other, that at least gives us direction. Otherwise, we sort of don't know what to do next, because we end up hearing, I've heard six different opinions tonight about what needs to be done, and we need direction. So, so I would propose we come back with the public opinion report when it's ready in late July, and then at that meeting, you can tell us if you want an ordinance to come back at the August meeting or not, if that would work for you.
Counselor Smith.
I wanted to add my agreement to Counselor Monague and Counselor Kopczynski for the utility fee with a gas tax option in the future.
And, and we're not telling her, telling the director to create a fee. We're authorizing her to create an ordinance so we can discuss if we do go forward with the fee. Is that correct?
Right, so you still get to debate and vote however you want on the ordinance. The ordinance could fail, you know, and then we, here we are. And then we'll have to discuss with you, we'll know what do you want us to do. And, you know, I mean, I think it's a big enough issue that I'm willing to keep talking about it, however many times you want to talk about it, because I, I have been saving my coffee cans, I just want you to know. And I have a whole set of coffee cans that are nice and pristine. And if we can ever get this done, I'm going to give all of you a brand-new coffee can that has not been kicked, because it needs, something needs to be done, and everyone agrees something needs to be done. And it's a very hard decision, and I understand that. But, so the ordinance is just, you can just vote on the ordinance. You could still tell us no, if that's how you feel, and then we'll have to figure out what to do next.
So counsel, would it be, I think it's feasible to have her bring back something to us without waiting for the report, because we still have to go through that report before we actually put something in place. This is just authority to create an ordinance, that's not making decisions to have one. I don't, I don't see what the problem is. I think we should go forward.
Well, we can bring the ordinance after the report. That's, the report will be done before the last August meeting, according to consultants.
I'd like to see the report.
Fine with that.
So that's your direction.
Okay, will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Next is business from the council. I'll start with Counselor Novak and work around the dais.
Would it be okay to go not first this time?
You went, you didn't go first last time, did you?
I don't know, but I'd like to not be first.
And Counselor Monague.
All right. I have a couple items. First, I attended Albany Pride Event on Saturday. It was a beautiful event, attended by beautiful people. I had a great time, and I just want to express my appreciation to the event organizer, those vendors that were out there, the volunteers in facilitating such a great event for, for the people of Albany. Second on my list, Joint Committee on Transportation, upcoming listening tour is July 16th, so mark your calendars. There will be a press release soon. I'll, I'll try to share that and get, get that shared once that comes out. But I want everybody to be aware and encourage people to speak at the public hearing, which is from 5:00 to 7:00 P. M., and I'm being told that it's at LBCC, so mark your calendars. It's a timely discussion, I think, talking about transportation.
Counselor Smith.
What Counselor Monague spoke about, the transportation roadshow that ODADA is doing, is it directly relates to the League of Oregon Cities' ballot for legislative priorities that we will be voting on in August. There are, I think, five transportation topics that are on that ballot. I served on the League of Oregon Cities' Transportation Policy Committee to formulate that part of the ballot, and it is extremely important. That is a top priority for the legislature, is a top priority for the League of Oregon Cities, just like street maintenance is a top priority for our council. So I would encourage you, everybody, to go to that meeting and let them know what we think.
Is it? Nothing about friends?
Let me just add one thing. While I was away, I visited another city hall. The day before, I was at the city hall in a community of 6,500 people in rural Brittany. I met with a number of local officials who were planning a commemorative event related to World War II that I was attending there. And one of the people who I, who was planning this, introduced himself as the deputy mayor. And I thought, well, nice to meet you. The mayor himself was there also. The next day, we were at city hall for a formal meeting with some other folks, and there was the mayor, and there was another gentleman, and he said he was the deputy mayor. I said, I just met the deputy mayor yesterday. Are there more, more of you? And he said, yes, we have eight. How many people are on your city council? Twenty-nine.
Wow.
It was like the Portland City Commission married the Corvallis City Council. Everybody is an elected official, and their council chambers don't have any seats for the public. So I guess everybody in town is on the council, so maybe that's, anyway, it was an interesting, interesting experience.
Appreciate that. Counselor Novak.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't feel like being first tonight. I appreciate it. So I kind of feel like we owe an apology to the city. For reasons that Mr. Roche eloquently wrote about and spoke about, I take no issue with people celebrating whatever they want to celebrate. I do take issue with explicit adult materials be, being in full view of children. And I think that obviously, the city as a sponsor would have known who the vendors are and what items would be displayed in public view, in open view, I should say. I would hope that we will, in the future, provide accommodation that would serve to protect young eyes from things they ought not see. It, it's not difficult to do, as he suggested in the letter, to have a tent that says adults only, just like we have adult shops. If you want to go in and you're adult, you can go in. But a five-year-old can't go in. Ellie couldn't go in. But if Ellie was with her mom on Saturday, you get my point. So this is my concern. Again, I'm not telling anyone they can't celebrate whatever they want to celebrate. What I am looking for here, which I believe the majority of people who live in our town feel the same way, they just want to protect the innocence of children. And, and that's what I'm speaking out about, and I truly hope and pray that in the future, the city, along with any and every other sponsor of this event, will take appropriate action to do this in a better way, in, in a right way. Thank you.
Counselor Newton.
I have a few things. So if you guys know, I've been married for about 11 years, and my daughter is turning nine, and she asked me if I would please, I know, she asked me if I'd please add on the same last name as my husband, so I'm going to be going by Newton Azor. Figure, you know, might as well, just never did it in the beginning. And so adding on my husband's last name hyphenated. Number two, summer reading program, both my kids are signed up, and my daughter already completed the first 15 days. We're anxiously awaiting going blueberry picking, very excited. And we also signed up for the Albany Visitors Association Passport Program. We're going to be doing a lot of fun stuff in the city this summer, so just wanted to plug those two things. And yeah.
Update?
You're welcome.
On the name? It was surprising with the name, I was like, thank you for doing that. Mr. Kopczynski, Ray Kopczynski.
Yes, there was two great events that happened this, this Saturday. One was the Pride Event, and one was the, I wasn't able to attend because I was helping facilitate Grizzly Berries unveiling down at the Carousel. Dr. Berry, we had a huge crowd down there, huge amount of fun for everybody that participated. We had pride, pride actors and engagement people coming in in groups, wanting to get rides at the Carousel. So it was absolutely a wonderful weekend all the way around, from, from my perspective of being all day down at the Carousel. So I encourage any and all of you, because in the next three, several weeks, we'll have another animal called Kyger the Mustang will be coming out on, onto the platform. So come on and down and enjoy it.
Thank you. And I, too, did not see that display at the Pride Event. I spent most of my time in the services area, thanking the services for coming out, but if I would have seen it, I would have said something, Mr. Roche. And I assure you that as a grandfather of a little girl and a little boy, I would have a problem with it. And so things like that, that explicit type stuff should not be displayed in public, in my estimation. So I do appreciate you bringing it to my attention. Thanks for that. The second thing was, it was my birthday on Saturday, 59th birthday, 59 cycles around the sun. It was, it was a great day. My daughter came down from Portland, and we had a great dinner. And never let people know in Sweet Register Birthday, because I had champagne sent over to me several times. But it was just a great city day. I didn't get to the Carousel, because I was doing that, plus my birthday, and the Albany Gyms Car Wash out in Les Schwab. The, I had the great honor of attending two camps, Camps for the Culture, people of color had a camp at the LBCC, because there's usually no communal camps the kids feel comfortable at. And so it was put on by a local nonprofit. And we actually did the If I Were Mayor contest. All the kids got together, and they had, sectioned them off into five people per group, and they got to write, draw a poster of what they wanted for the city. They presented, and it was amazing watching these young kids who were terrified of talking to the mayor, because they came from Philomath, Portland, different places. But these kids stood up in front of the class, and they picked their own mayor, and the mayor got to present their findings to Dumea and the other counselors there. So it was great. And then I had the Honors Speaking at Boys State. Anybody know about American Legion Boys State? Boys and Girls State, it was at OSU this year. We only had one child from Albany in it, which was a concern. There was over 140 children, young people there. And we talked about, Kathy Clark spoke about the homeless issue and housing. I spoke about city governance. And these young people are future leaders of their communities. They were asking great questions. They were engaged. They laughed when they needed to laugh. They were serious when they needed to be serious. But they always cut back to, how are we going to make our community better in Philomath or Newport or wherever they came from? And it was just a great discussion, and I enjoyed spending time with those young folks. It was hot, and I was in a suit, and I was sweating like a pig. Next thing was, oh, our fire truck. It was awesome. I had never seen a fire truck that was brand-new, so thank you, Chief LeBelle, that was awesome to see that. The Lumberjack Breakfast is happening, and I actually have the actual dates and times, because it's going to be July 4th, 5th, and 6th at Timberland Park. I was there last year, and I had a great time meeting with folks, answering questions. People had general, real questions about the city and the things that we're doing here, so it was really great to be there. Thank you, Director Grotto. And also, July 4th is the first day of the new water park, new Montith Park being opened back up. I'd love to see all of you out there. I've been inviting people from all over the state to come. I think it's going to be great with fireworks, the new stage. I met the architects that designed the stage at a meeting the other day, and it was just, I'm excited. When that, that project, when did the Urban Renewal District start? 2001? So it's been 23 years, and the water, the park is finally done. It is an exciting time in Albany, and people are excited about coming here to see it. So I'm hoping to see you all out there that night. Lee Grenwood's going to be there, patriotic music, there's going to be fireworks. And I don't think I've ever seen a fireworks display on our waterfront ever since I've been here 30 years. So I'm looking forward to seeing you all out there.
Is there an opening ceremony?
There's going to be an opening ceremony at the beginning of that, and then we're going to get out the way and let the music happen. And with that, I will then turn it over to our acting city manager.
Thank you. So two of my things were taken by the counselor and the mayor. So just to address one thing, Counselor Novak, the city does not sponsor the Pride Event. We have tables and participate like other vendors, but there's no sponsorship. So that's just a misnomer that's out there. And then the only other thing I have is a reminder that we have retirement celebrations on Friday morning for Captain Lyles from the Police Department, and then Friday afternoon is Chief Wooton, his retirement celebration at Station 11. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much, and yeah, thanks for the reminder on the retirement ceremonies, albeit both. And please, counsel, if you can make it, please come and join and send these gentlemen off with a good pat on the back, and thank you for their service to the city of Albany. Next meeting is July 8th, 2024, it's a work session at 4:00 P. M. here in Chambers. And then following that, the next city council meeting is July 10th, 2024, at 6:00 P. M. here. And then with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.